He's driving diesel. I'm trying to give him talk at this point. I'm not as...
I will say, I know this much about it. He will have to bring sewer and easy water and road will have to be installed to the property.
That's admirable. Which is why the one that's the...
Yeah, just... Thanks God all that, I don't know what else to ask.
Do you have to front the bill on the RBL to be...
Oh yeah.
Hey, welcome to Waterloo.
The whole time we front everything out, I mean, to Congress and then pay sales.
So do you get concessions?
Jerry says it's temporary.
We don't get anything off livestock sales. We don't get any of that, that all of this.
You had a 10%, 10%.
You're really... That would change the tape.
We are going to convene as an RDA board. Talking about our... They have an outstanding sales leader, so... We will... I'm sure we'll turn it over to you here. This is Craig Smith. He... This was Smith Harvick's son. He's... He's first been representing the RDA board. Jan excuses himself during this part of the discussion. And so in our past meetings, in your packets, you should have seen... Thank you, Stacy.
You're welcome.
The meeting minutes from the past years' meetings of the RDA. The RDA is... This board is basically consistent with the county council board. If you're elected to the county council, then you're part of the RDA board. The redevelopment agency board works independent of the county council, but still with the same board members. I'll let Dwayne... Well, let's let Craig just say what's been set up on the... Through the RDA board to date. And then turn some turnover to Dwayne, just so that we're consistent.
Well, I don't think too much has happened recently with the agency. It was formed a number of years ago. And it is a separate, as Ruben was mentioning, it's a separate legal entity, even though it is governed by a board of directors, which is consistent with the county council. And that's by law, that's the way it's everywhere in the state. I know that the agency's been looking at a project, doing a project down in Mountain Green. That's why, obviously, these guys are here, they're interested in that. About a year, year and a half ago, the agency board passed a survey resolution, a pick-up resolution, starts the process of considering whether to create a project area. The agency basically works through project areas. And the funding of the agency is not taxes. The agency has no power to tax anybody. What the funding source for the agency is, is what's called tax increment financing. Probably all heard about that. It's one of the common, the few economic development tools that local governments have in the state of Utah. Only cities and counties can create agencies, no other government entity can. And what that is, is the increase in taxes caused by development within a project area. So, for example, if I had a project area and it was a piece of paragraph that was worth a million dollars, because we built a $99 million building on it, then the increment would be the additional tax or several of them, a annual tax based on that $99 million increase in value. And so it's a... It's a prospective or a performance-based... If nobody builds anything, then there's no money. So it's not like you're giving money, hoping someone will build something, or providing money to build it will. The idea is, no, they've got to go out and perform. The building's got to be built, taxes have to be paid. The setting up a project area is a multi-step process. Like I said, we've kind of just done the first step here. What you do is you gather information about the project area. You create what's called a project area plan, which is a plan of what you want to do in that project area. You also create a project area budget. Now, again, that's a... That's a... You're predicting the budgets. It's not like there's money there. The only money, you'd say, well, we think we'll get this much money by this point. But things have to get built, taxes have to be paid. All that stuff has to happen, because you don't have any money. So it's a projection, is what the budget is. And then the project area has a term. Could be 10 years, could be 20 years, could be any... Well, there's really no, in the law, it's no set number of years. And during that term, the agency has the ability to collect that tax increment. So to do that, though, the agency has to enter into what's called interlocal agreements with the other taxing agencies where they agree to provide some of that increment that would otherwise come to them. The reason to say, well, why would anybody do that? Like, we're just giving away all their money, why would anybody want to do that? Well, agencies, you know, they're used to make things happen. Make it happen faster, make it happen better. Take advantage of opportunities that may not exist forever. For example, with the Mountain Green situation, there's a lot of development in the mouth of River Canyon. That could capture a lot of the things that could happen in Mountain Green. You have that area to compete with. I mean, there's... You know, you can't put... I remember years ago, I worked with South Ogden, where the Costco's that you probably all been with, the Costco. That was a Kmart, if you remember that project area. I remember when I went to the first city council in South Ogden, they said, well, what have you do? And they need like 15 different stores. Well, they were all over in Riverdale. You're not going to have two... Two things that close together. You know, you're not going to have two sporting warehouses within a mile of each other. You're not going to have, you know... All these things have demographics and need to be spaced out. Fortunately, the one thing we could help bring in there was... Was the Costco. And we helped make that happen. And that's been a huge project for South Ogden. We later then worked with South Ogden on the young Chevrolet, or now it's a young Subaru there, was there. That was a empty abandoned used car lot. Now, that's a great economic thing for them. So that's a little bit about how it's done. The agency makes all the decisions, the board does. So if you adopt a plan, adopt a budget, enter into agreements, that's all got to be part of the agency board in a public meeting. It's a public body, just like the county is, and...
So the site plan specifically was submitted and adopted in the February meeting. The specific site plan, it came back and was revised because the school asked for no residential as part of the revised site plan. We revised that site plan in subsequent meetings. It wasn't adopted, that specific site plan. It's only just the project plan. And so we would still have to come back with the revised site plan. When they said no residential, this was just for the commercial. So you would say to yourselves, what's changed since we were convening last year? And I'll turn it over to Dwayne, and you'll tell him about selling this ground and some of the things that have changed.
Well, I guess to back up, we have a development agreement that we had with the county in 2014. And we have worked on some commercial people to try to get them to come and build. Most of them are saying, what kind of incentive do you have? You know, we can go to Riverdale, we can go to Lake, and we can go here, we can go there and get an incentive. So if you're not going to offer us anything, and we don't think you've quite got enough people there yet anyway. And so, you know, they want to pass. So every day, the tax dollars are going down the canyon that could have stayed here in Morgan. And somebody made the comment, well, if you take a percentage of it, you're... We're giving our money away. Well, it's half of it or whatever's a whole lot better than getting nothing. And today, the county gets tax off the bare ground, which most of it is greenbelted. And so it's...
How do you riddle those cows? That's what you've got to do. How do you riddle those cows?
So every day, people are going over Trapper Loop Road, and they're going to Huntsville, spending their money. They're going to down the canyon, spending their money. And, you know, the old farm market, I guess, is getting a little bitty piece of it. Couple other places. But the majority of the tax dollars in Morgan County is leaving Morgan County. And I believe that it would be good for the public if they could go to the grocery store, if they could go here, they could go there without having to drive to Ogden, or Leighton, or Riverdale, or wherever. So that's kind of my pitch is...
So wouldn't it...
Rather just build houses, I would like to see some commercial base built. They go hand in hand.
So one of the significant things that had changed since we last convened was that UDOT came in and bought before the years end, Dwayne's property to establish that right-of-way, which is important. Everybody will say, well, when is that going to be built? And does this accelerate that or not accelerate it? But one of the important things is that the placeholder, right? And they continue in the UDOT world to look at what funding needs to happen. I was with Brad Wilson, the Speaker of the House, just recently. We're working on what legislation needs to go with Jerry Stevenson appropriation as well as the Senate. And so we continue to say, that's critical for the overall, both the ski resorts and what's happening at that crossroads. Not only is the ground purchased, but continued planning for that interchange. So that's changed. Like, we also have additional, you know, residents that have moved in. After they ask where they can go to school, they'd like to find a place that they can get some food and some groceries and other things. And so we continue to court grocery stores, gas stations, restaurants, those kinds of things that would be able to... Hospitality, hotels, those kinds of things that would sit in that corridor, as you get off the freeway. Sorry, Robert.
So I read through the study materials. You talked about the different boundary? Or the projections in the proposed budget based on including the residential or not including the residential?
And if I could just add one thing. Residential's usually not a great moneymaker. Most people don't realize this, but you get a 45% discount on your taxes for your house. So when it comes to property taxes, primary residences are not a great source of income for the agency.
Yeah, I was just wanting to make sure, because it sounded like originally they included a boundary that had everything. So this budget is based on the reduced boundary to only include the commercial area?
Correct. It didn't have everything. There was still some single-family, but of the townhomes and multifamily homes, that's since been reduced to where there's a corridor next to the new potential corridor of commercial. And then the commercial is located, I say east, but somebody would say northeast of that interchange. Right? We're trying to go over the fairgrounds and figure out where most of the... Whatever that goes for. There is a... There is a component that comes back in here next to the土地 ground that's not included, and that should have been. So we didn't re... We were ready to resubmit, but we got hung up in some of the budget issues. And so we redefined just the commercial. We'll need to do that with the plan.
One of the things I think you'll find if you study other cities, that if you didn't have anything but just homes, your taxes would be through the roof. You just can't support, particularly if you have to... You're requiring 200-foot of frontage, like Morgan County had in Oregon for a long time in the county. If you've got a main 200-foot road, the county does, it gets to be pretty spendy for what tax revenue they get back off home.
So the issue today is, we plowed some of this turf with the RDA and to create a CBA. We found ourselves in the overall process trying to focus on what's the public good? What comes out of this? What public good could this project bring besides taxes, which would be important? Is there... Is there something in your mind besides, in the presentation earlier this spring, where the commission came together, the planning commission came together with the council? And Mr. Evans presented the DAT and the other design criteria? We've mirrored some of that, and we think we could present that. We're not here tonight to present specifics on the plan. We kind of wanted to hear what you thought was important for the public good. We know that there's a sewer plant that needs to be updated in that area. We're not sure, is that the public good that we ought to jump in and try to have solved? Is it the public plaza? Is it the open space, you know, along the creek? Is it the trails? Is it... What are those things that make up this fabric of the community that you've heard about for the last six months about this project? So that we can go back, incorporate some of those things into our design, and then come back over the next 16 to 19 days with a plan that you feel comfortable with, with a budget that we have redefined, and a process that works in this project. We're not here today to say, load us up and down. We're here to take input so we can incorporate it. We heard in that meeting, you know, a lot of people saying, shut the door on growth. Others saying, no, we need growth, we need tax. We think this commercial brings that tax base. Yet, at the same time, we're not sure if there's something specific. We think the ladder truck's been solved, but maybe I'm wrong, I don't know. They got a ladder truck according to...
Well, if you're looking for specifics for what I'd like to see, what is attractive to me about this area is I have people approach me all the time, like, they want what's in the DAT, they want what's in the DAT. That the concern over why the DAT did not pass was the density that is in the DAT. But what is already approved in the development agreement is that density already. So we're going to get that density anyway. But what I see the difference is in the DAT, is the design of a city center that creates a gathering space. At one point, there was a covered bridge, I'm not thinking that that's actually doable with the traffic that's on there. But it does create a different feel, that you are now somewhere that you... That is a town, a community, a gathering place, walkable. It gives you a sense of community somewhere to go. That, to me, is the most attractive part about the DAT and why the community rallied around the idea in the DAT. So to me, that's... That is the only reason that I've been really, really excited about a way to get to that. Because I do realize there is a difference in cost from what you are allowed to do and what is envisioned in the DAT. And to me, this is a way to get us from there to where we want to be as a community. Some of those drawings that we've seen with... I know there was some concern over some of the specifics in those, but the overall feel is still there, that we're trying to create a gathering place, the city... City isn't too big a word, sorry, I'm counting to one. But a community, a center. To me, that's... That's the crucial part. Also, since I spent... I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, since I've been trying to find commercial property, and we are stuck on so many different areas, I would like to see an opportunity for some commercial space to come in. But I am very concerned that that would be in the same area that a town center or a community or a gathering space would be. So I am... I would like to see that. If that is what we do there, I want to be very careful and very specific over what that looks like and how you still maintain this is your city center, but is also the way the bluff sits there as you continue on Old Highway, you look down over this area. So I am concerned about the overall aesthetics and that we still keep a sense of community also recognizing that you're going to drag a little farther up the freeway and so to...
Does the architecture need to be something, when you say theme or pleasing? Is it the architecture or...
I think it's the overall, the feel of the open space, the... And the architecture is part of that. If you keep that you're still in a rural mountain community, that design, that feel, that it isn't looking like you're in.
So no strip center?
Yeah.
We've got zoning for that, I would call it.
They're not. But more... More, I don't want it to feel like you've just been into an industrial center. If you're going to have... If it's going to be a mixed-use area, then I want the standards on the architecture so you're not going to feel like you're in your heavy manufacturing zone.
Does... When you say walkable, walkable from other neighborhoods or walkable within the center?
I think, well, I would like to see... There is that trail that goes along the creek to that. That part of it is very... In connecting the other parts of the community, that's one of the... And we can work with WFRC on getting some of those grants to kind of pull into this so that we do have... There are other sources available besides the RDA. We just need an overall plan for how you connect the community together. So the overall goal is to create a community that is where you want to be in 25, 30 years. That there's a plan for what it looks like from now on.
Doesn't end up the area around like Thanksgiving Point. I don't know if you've ever been there, that's a total disaster. Thanksgiving Point is great, but what happens all around it is, you can't drive, you can't get anywhere. It's really tough to negotiate. It's really tough to negotiate because they do do that.
But I like the notion of a center, a village center. And I don't know how much inline retail you think you could reasonably develop at least. You know, if it's a block on both sides, or if you could do two blocks worth. And then some kind of village center. And I frankly think the density around it is required in order for it to be viable and for it to be successful. If we're going to do this, I want... Well, I understand that, but I think it's also necessary in order for it to be successful. And if we're going to do this, I want it to be successful. I don't want to see it happen and then just languish and be unsuccessful.
Have you ever thought of a food truck court or... Is it a food truck? Sorry, did I just get something?
I think we have that, right?
That's not...
Well, we have one. Shave ice truck, is that what you're talking about, our court?
No, Jack's red truck, like...
Well, he's on a different corner. So I've seen the one in South Jordan.
Right, in Holiday and...
I haven't seen Holiday yet.
They're almost in every city you go to. Where food trucks are pulling out, the people are gathering. I've had a couple of dogs from Mountain Green call me and want that created. And that could be created along the creek. Be landscaped beautifully, the shade trees, picnic tables. That food trucks could pull in there.
I'm going to have to see photos of this idea, I think.
The one in South Jordan is, I mean, it's... It's a relatively simple way to bring in some retail to see how well it works. It's not a huge capital outlay to get people to bring in their trucks. I mean, there's the one that they do in Fruit Heights, which is not a truck court. They just line them up along the community space, and they all come in. And it's like every Monday night, you know, people are just driving home. But South Jordan has its designated area, and I think you guys are talking about putting in a covered eating area or something.
We are, and then with, maybe even wintertime, but the doors would roll down, and then you could have stuff inside and, you know, out of the weather. What we've found is the food truck people are now coming in, finding success in the community if they do. And then they say, hey, but we then want sticks, mortar and bricks. You know, they feel comfortable in then making that commitment. And some of those that gravitate, you know, the churro guys say, just find me a place where I can put my sign in. Like, I'll sell churros. You're like, churros, you're going to make money, you know, really? You know, but the J-Dog guys and everybody else, they're going to say, well, so we've thought, is that public space, if it was part of that food court, you know, where there's no cars, but pedestrians? And obviously, the food trucks come before the people who are there through the night, and there's lights. We're just throwing that out because there's been some cities that have adopted that on their way to more sticks and mortar and bricks.
Where are sugar houses at?
Holiday's the one that I was thinking of, is out in the mall area. And they have designated areas where they come in. And so there's food court, or food truck associations. So they designate the trucks that come to your place. And then they'll start, the citizens will start saying, well, we want these trucks because they're the most successful. And they say, well, we can't do that to the other guys who've made that commitment, so we can't rotate. And that's how you have to make... We would... What we would try to do is make electricity and... So that it wouldn't have to run those generators. And they can just plug in, and then that grilling, they cook through the propane, it's a lot easier on that load. Do you find that is... Is the concern in the area to... That accelerated that the RDA, excuse me, the CBA, CRA, sorry. You'll get it right. I know, Craig. Accelerated growth that's unmanageable? Or is... Do you just want steady growth or low growth?
I think the question, from what I understood from before, what was the immediate concern is the tax increment financing. One, that maybe it wasn't understood with the public, but also, if we don't incentivize the project, will it remain stagnant or will it grow with the market? So when the interchange comes, will it grow naturally through the market and wouldn't need to be incentivized? The other concern I have more, I guess, even with the tax increment financing would be that while incentives do drive business growth on some level, the other thing is a skilled labor force or being close to the consumer. And a little bit of my concern, if you look at like Almer Sports, who I worked for and who I saw be successful because of an RDA. But a big factor in that was, yes, the mountains, because they sell skis and all those things. So close to the consumer there. But a big driving factor also was their employees and where they're going to live. So I could tell you that they never would have relocated to Morgan County because the average home price is, what, $350,000? Where in Ogden at that time, it was $150,000, which has probably risen. But just how do we attract those businesses? Because we know that it's necessary, but will they come here even...
Do we have the workers to support those kinds of businesses?
Right, because if we just bring in doctors and dentists... Well, I just spoke to a dentist in Mountain Green, who told me that he struggles to fill his dental assistant positions because they can make a little bit more money if they travel down the canyon. Takes them 10 minutes. And so he has this repeated turnover for dental assistants. So if we're just housing those businesses... So I guess maybe this is a barrier challenge, but those are some of the challenges that I see with traffic business.
How we balance between the commercial growth and yet areas where the workers is affordable?
Right. For big business or very successful businesses, that will be a key driver for them.
The same thing is happening in Morgan City with Mauricio, in thinking about moving, traverse travel down to Weaver. He'd love to stay in the community, but to try to attract a workforce that can afford to live up here and still be paid, he pays above average wage for the county, but it's hard to find someplace...
I don't think it's restricted due to those upper-level skilled positions. You work fast for the places and stuff, struggle to find because kids aren't working like they used to. High schools, kids are not given that, and where mom and dad are funding what they need. And so that's an issue also.
Yeah, I was at the meeting the other day, and I didn't completely how many people they brought in from here. They were so good. And I said, why is that? She said, I guess none of the local kids will work here. But I don't know if the pay, I'm sure it has something to do with that.
My son, my son.
He did?
My son.
He's a...
I can't see the reports, her little girl.
I would have been a pretty good...
It was character building.
I did landscaping there.
Sweaty, oh.
Early morning.
It's a lifeguard, you don't want to hear this.
I personally believe that we could have some longer than... Again, putting it around the town center so that those people that come home can walk into the town center and have a sense of place, and then others can come, you know, from around to be there. I think that helps, making all the work.
And that would be part of it. It is part of it. But the question is, when we get into trouble? Because I heard that some of our past townhome meetings, rentable is not perceived as ownership.
We can.
I like the big homes.
In Oregon, if you want to do condominiums, great. If you want to do multifamily housing, great. It's... We can't get into that business, and we simply need to tell the public we can't get into that business. Because it's, you know, it's... I wouldn't want to do a rental on a month and month, you know. The RBL is everything. I would like to see an annual lease, which other thing could fit some of that affordability versus, you know, some of these people that, to be honest with you, that just like their loans in Ogden, they're trashed down to, and that's the world they're living in.
And that's the world they're living in, they're more that way. And some of these areas where the lease are comfortable and good enough.
Do you feel that, that, is, is this the right location for commercial in Mountain Green? Or is there, is, is, we are not in the town center zone, we're outside of it. And we, we started looking at the town center zone across the way. We think we have some of the same components of the town center zone, but, but we think with the interchange coming there, that this seems to be the logical place. I can't think of any other place, but am I missing it or is there, is anybody saying?
We couldn't make you the town center zone because of the development agreement that's already there. So, the town center zone was actually assigned because if we could have put in the request I had, the planning permission back then, it's changed. Stop me if I'm wrong, my, my request was, if you could zone this property, which we can't because of the development agreement, what would it look like? And that's where the town center.
But if the town center zone does include a lot of the architectural standards and those types of things that I think would be good to integrate on both sides there, you know, most of them are not cost prohibitive. They're, they're the kind of thing I think you'd want to build anyway, so it's not a, you know, adding a lot to it. But I think having that continuity between both sides of the road would be a good thing.
Okay, so town center architecture and some of the components that's made up of it, likewise the data that you've seen?
This is page 13. It's missing off the road, you know how it has, in order for it to work, that spur has to come over and connect to the road up to the elementary school so that this, so it becomes, you don't want your town center to be that busy as a road, you gotta have something that comes off of the road. So, this picture, it doesn't show that that way, and if, this is on page 13.
All right, so in our planning, we, we know everything in this life is controlled by infrastructure up here in this world. Sewers, waters, it takes in wells that we drill, the electricals there, the gas. I think all the infrastructure we've accounted for, roadways we understand. So, storm drains easier. But I think with that in mind, we know that CRA can't fund anything vertically. You just have to do mortar bricks and sticks and everything, you don't see them underground. And, and so, that's why we're trying to get all of that land in place. The, the, our goal would be to come back in September, if you would allow us in this kind of a setting, to present some options of a site plan that you could take your teeth into, looking at how this would be incorporated into the community, kind of trails, walkable, public spaces and so forth. And, and yet at the same time, pay particular attention to the landscaping, which I think goes without saying. So that's going to be a critical component of this, how do you landscape it? And then, as we do that and get some of your input, then we would come back in October with some of those numbers that would be based on that. When you said the walkable bridge, we didn't think it would be a car, an audio, or automobile bridge, but it could be a pedestrian covered bridge, you know, that would connect across. But as we've studied the creek, there's a period of time when that creek's really unsafe because of the amount of water that it generates through there. And so, even though it would be nice and walkable trails, we've been trying to say, how do you fence some of that? Or do we do a bypass where some of the water goes in a bypass so that the creek always looks like it's meandering?
It did happen to have someone here, just last meeting, there is a strong one about creeks, you know, with them. I don't know whether it would be.
We have worked with them in the past, and we're working with them on a fish ladder about Cottonwood Canyon Creek right now. So, we're very familiar with those guys.
And they gave you some knowledge?
We met with them and, and they kind of got gun-shy because they couldn't see how it helped the fish. But I, we were trying to calm the water during the spring and yet have water year-round by recirculating that. And we've been trying to work, how would that work in their?
I like the city creek, how it?
Yeah, how it manifests itself. That could be, you'd almost have to line it because everything there just goes down in that gravel and so forth. But we've been looking at that with engineers on how we can make the creek more of an amenity because it's, in the springtime, everybody knows it's just, it's really.
Well, I don't think that they would be really helpful. That's, they originally approached me on the, on the river up here because they want, especially if you're going to assign a town center around it, you don't want the creek to meander and then take out your infrastructure.
And they have tons of.
And they have ways of doing that now so that it still looks natural, but at high and low, it's still workable for what you're doing.
Okay. I've reached out to my duty with them on some of the ideas, we'll do that again. And then, okay, so, I wouldn't derelict you much here. But can I ask you as the attorney to kind of give us a layout as to the process from this point on? And, because when we talk about RDAs or CRAs, the first thing that comes to my mind is, okay, what's the terms, right?
Okay.
And, and I think when it all boils down to it, that's going to be the sticking point for everybody. Is what are the terms and are they reasonable? And does it benefit the county? Does it benefit you? Is it win-win or is it, you know, heavy on one side or the other and how does it work that out? So, trying to, to not put the cart before the horse. I mean, obviously, at this point, you don't know what those terms necessarily are. But at what point do we discuss that? And, you know, when do we make those types of decisions? I want to kind of understand that.
Sure. Yeah, the plan kind of determines what you're trying to do. And that has some, you know, financial aspect to it, obviously, then you develop a budget based on that. And the budget is how much money you think you can collect over a certain amount of time in tax increment. And then also, and it's typical these days that if you don't collect, keep 100% in the project area, you would, you would take maybe 75%, 75, 25 is a pretty common split now between. Because you have to take that to the other taxing, including the county. The county would have to sign an interlocal agreement with the agency. And the school district's the biggest one, obviously, because they have the biggest piece of the tax, the sales tax part is theirs. And so obviously you have to have something.
The property tax part is there, there's the sales tax part is the handles.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry if I said that wrong. I meant the property tax is the school district. But there's ways that you can actually benefit schools through how you handle the money. I don't want to get into those kind of details at this level, but if you want to talk to me about it, I'd be happy to. And, you know, that's how you, you know, it's a negotiation process because there's nothing in the law that says they have to give you one penny of their, of the tax increment. They can say, well, we think it's going to happen by itself. And if it doesn't, well, then one has anything. That's, you know, you know, who can see the future? But that's kind of how it works. And there's a small percentage that goes to the administration of the project area so it's not coming out of the tax dollars of the county or the county has to support it. That's usually around a 2% to 5% is all we're talking about there to support the, pay for the ongoing operation of the, of the project area. It was administration of it by the.
Then you're saying that 2% to 5% comes out of the project area?
Yeah, that comes out as part of the project area budget. And then, there would be a percentage of the project area budget for affordable housing that could be used in the project area and really anywhere in the county. And, but, you know, so it'd be a subject of kind of negotiation and a lot of it depends on, first of all, what do these guys think they can build and what's that going to be worth? That's kind of the first kind of question you have because if they're not going to build it, I mean, this is really a true, you know, you hear a lot about public-private partnerships and a lot of times they're not go partnerships. This really is because neither one can do without the other. If they don't build anything and, or don't build things that are valuable, then there's not going to be the money. So that's the first question would be to these guys, and well, what do you think you can build and what would be the timeline? How, how soon would those come on? Because it's not going to be appearing overnight. And you take a snapshot, the property taxes every January 1st and what's there and that determines the value of that year. So, with that in mind, then you could then start trying to come up with some ideas of how that, and again, start to help make something happen, otherwise wouldn't.
So, I, I could, the question maybe that Mike had was, is that, so in September, we were coming back with some project drawings and some ideas. We could come, we could come back with some preliminary budgets also, so we could start, just some ideas.
Yeah.
So, right now, what's been done, from what I understand, is a resolution has been passed saying, we establish an area. That's, that's basically, we are looking into establishing.
Okay, so the next step would be actually establishing the area.
Yeah.
And then the next step would be discussing terms. If we agree as an RDA board on that, on those terms, then you go on to the other taxing entities, discuss the terms with them and they also have to decide whether they're going to participate or not.
Right, the RDA negotiates.
Yeah, you negotiate those and.
But you have a project first, right? Before we, before we even get to that.
Yeah, the terms of the project.
Have a project, what you're, what you're funding and why, and then you go to terms.
Right, but what Mike's saying though is, is really critical and that is that he's going to the heart of it. I pass it, trails and it's annoying. I know you're not. My point is that, can we ever come to grips on the terms? And the answer is, well, if we're reflecting what we think is best for the community and we come up with the right budget and we come up with the right terms, I agree, you know, misunderstanding, then it seems like this is something that could now, this project could move forward. And all I'm saying is, if we can come back in September with some of these drawings that you could critique, with some preliminary budgets, then in October, come back and then start focusing on, say, this is what we need to make some of the lease rates. We've heard from two grocers, we know what they need on the lease rate. And, and I apologize for Roland through this and Robert Kilmer's through this, until they're about to hear with these analogies.
I'm like, I have a certain, and I'm smashing it in my car.
Yeah, that's the same. And Daryl's, the issue is, is that they tell us the lease rate and we back ourselves into it. Now, what we're able to do over time is, is to put incremental jumps in there to get up to the market rates. They can't take it at day one. They can't take it at day five. They can't take it at day 10. And you say, well, 10 years, they ought to be able to be successful. They need to be subsidized because their margins are so small, especially, I'm speaking of grocery stores. So, what happens after that 10th year? Well, hopefully you're starting to get up to that market rate that they can, they can absorb and then they can say, okay, I can stand on my own two feet as those things, you know, the, the RDA, uh, so what we're going to do for 15 years or. But what happens is, so now we've got the grocery store negotiated, we've got two restaurants negotiated, we've got this negotiated. And then we've got those built, then at the third, the fifth year, here comes somebody else. So, that period of time needs to go a little bit relaxed because we've got now another set of group, you know, tenants coming up. So what he said, and he was saying it nicely, he was saying, but I want it to happen and I want it to happen at once because some of these things, you know, you see as a grocery store, hey, anybody else out there, you know? And it takes so long, pretty soon you lose the momentum and then everybody starts saying, well, this isn't what we pictured it to be. And it's just not there. And so Roland and Robert will say, but let it happen naturally. Then it does happen, you know, on its own. I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I think I heard you say that once. Let it happen naturally, therefore, it does have legs and it will sustain itself, you know? And we're saying, give us a chance to sustain it for a period of time. And we believe then it grows its legs so that it can. Now, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? And that's the whole discussion of these kind of terms that we all get to.
So, so the last proposed budget that was reflected in materials, we reflected a 50-50 split over 20 years. And, and it generated for the county each side of $7 million. Assuming everything left according to the budget. Seven million dollars.
Over the course of 20 years.
After paying for the.
After the. Yeah, so the county share of it generated $8 million. The school district and then the other ones off. And if you stayed at the same tax level that the property's at now, over the same 20-year period, adjusting fluctuation and increases in taxes, you generate $400,000. So, it's, it's, from my perspective, tax increment's a good way to get and add weight for both and to not put the county at risk with respect to reimbursement that doesn't, we don't have the funds for it because.
And that's what Craig and I. In my mind, that's the biggest sticking point and problem that I think the public in general and even us here have is understanding how that actually works because we get it in our mind, oh, the county's giving money to the business out of our funds, right? Well, it is out of our funds, but it's out of funds that we've already collected from you. So we're reimbursing a portion of what we collect from you after you've paid your sales or your property taxes. You don't have it unless we build something. Yeah, it's got to be built. So, but, but, but there's also, I think, Robert, Roland, you guys are all quite, are being very kind. And that is, I did buy a B-4, so you've got to be nice to me.
I know, I'm sorry.
Is that, that we led with that economic study. And if you get into that economic study, that adds a lot of numbers to it, but can you really predict that that's, that's viable? And, and so you get into that and you say, good grief, everybody would be doing these because these numbers are so large, right? And so I think that always sets the expectation. But if you really studied those numbers and you really understood what they were trying to say, they're trying to say, well, is this a result of the interchange? Or is this a result of just the natural thing happening? Or if we incentivize this to get to the market, and that's all we're asking for, is incentive, to be incentivized to make sure that we're neutral in the market versus the loss that's from. Then we think those numbers will still come to fruition over the next 10 to 15 years. But, but.
Was it as a result of the interchange, you know, that's what, what's the name of that group that gave that presentation? Burningham.
Oh, Louis Shaggy.
Yeah, Louis Shaggy, Burningham. And, and it kind of turned us a little bit backwards because we were trying to say, well, are you promoting the interchange? Are you promoting the project? Is it had, well, with the interchange, this happens faster and, and that's called absorption.
But I would rather incentivize an intentional, well-thought-out development now than live with an unintentional, unplanned and disorganized development in the future. And if, if a little bit of incentive, this, my personal view is what helps create that, then it's worth doing to me. Because I think we get a better net product in the end, both as a developer and as a county and as a community.
Now, I've seen that happen still over and over because otherwise you just have zoning and then you're fighting those battles, those zoning battles. And I fought the battles. I worked for Park City years ago and I bought signs, I bought billboards. I can still do it and I'm happy to do it. People pay me to do it. But this way, you can get involved and say, we want something better than, we want to have something better than what will just kind of happen on its own.
So Craig and Robert, what properties are you two referring to?
I'm sorry.
Because you're talking, you've only got zoning and you're saying that you want something that's planned, not unplanned.
So, so what I'm saying.
This is a planned thing. It's very planned.
It is, but is it, is it the optimal thing for a town center?
So are you saying potentially work was doing and change that development agreement to allow changes in that?
If they came to us with a better-looking town center than what's currently proposed in their development agreement, then yeah, I would absolutely agree with you on that. And I'm not saying I wouldn't. I'm just trying to figure out what you're talking about because my understanding is we have a planned development agreement that they've put a lot of time and money on and to say that it's unplanned, I think that's unfair to the Johnsons because I think they have a plan.
I think what I understand is, it can either be hodgepodge, excuse me if I'm wrong, or we can have something planned out because if it don't happen, this is not, maybe I'm wrong with him, but if Joe comes over here and wants to buy that half acre, and we can't work out the width of the county, I'm going to sell that half acre. And then if Joe, Steve comes over here and wants to buy this site, then to me, what, if I'm understanding Bobby right, that becomes a hodgepodge. Not, what you're saying, you want to see is a gathering place. It's just whatever comes along at the time.
Yeah, I guess you can make it better. And that's, that's, that's why we're stopping. We've put a hold, we're rethinking, we're getting other things into place and we're back saying, okay, thanks for your input. Let us take a shot.
and we're back saying, okay, thanks for your input, let us take a shot at some of these drawings, with understanding what the development agreement is, understanding what the town center shows, what, understanding some of this, that we're working our way through, and, and, and see if we can't, in that development agreement, make sense of how this would be best for this community, under any scenario. Then, then come back and, and we'll run some preliminary budgets, so we can start talking some preliminary terms, and then by October, we've gotta be well into it, so that by November, the end of the year, we can, we can know the direction, we get our designs going, we give you a timeframe of what we're trying to accomplish, and that, to me, says that we're listening to the right people.
Okay, so what, so my question is, don't want to just start to confuse you guys. You're telling me that the only way to get a good planned development is with incentives? That's what you said?
I'm not saying that's the only way. I'm saying, what I said is, I would rather incentivize the development in order to get what we want as a community, than to just say, they've got zoning, they've got, and look, it's obviously not good enough, because you've been out marketing, I assume you've wanted to sell the property since 2014.
Well, we haven't really put a hard push on, yeah.
But we, we don't have people in the county knocking on our door, saying, I want to put my grocery store right here. I want to put, I guess you have one person that's interested in commercial development and can't find a piece of property.
But we don't have a lot of commercial users beating down our doors, saying, hey, just give us a place anywhere, and we'll, we'll do it. Whereas, what I think's happening here is you've got a group that's a developer, and by the way, you didn't ask for a declarational complex of interest at the beginning, but I do represent these guys in some shape or form. Craig represents the county.
Yeah.
But I would rather incentivize to get something that's better. If you think about that town center area, the quadrant, I don't know that the quadrant of Saint Clair is on what those people will be willing to do, and there's some constraints, frankly, in terms of the hill behind it that might make it difficult to do the actual center there. The other one, you've got what looked to me to be principally a residential developer that has got a road going up to the school. I think they're just gonna come back with a proposal to do residential. We may have a commercial corner there, you know, and maybe it's enough for a service station and maybe a little bit of in-line. I don't see the creation of a town center anywhere other than on their property, if it's in that area. It may be a different area. And so, and, and what I see in, in their development plan, I don't know if that's the optimal town center from my perspective. I don't know who designed it, but-
Well, if I go back, and I didn't sit on the DAP board, but I've talked to a good number, probably the higher, the majority of those who sat on the DAP. Part of, part of the question I asked every single time was, that this was Johnson's property, how much money did Johnsons have in a very well-thought-out, well-designed plan? We just came in and put it on top of their property, and then said, we would like this additional infrastructure here to create a town center, what is the incentive for the property owner? I know how I feel, if somebody plucked that down on my front yard and said, this is what we want you to do here, with no incentive. To me, there's, there's the disconnect, is we have a development agreement the way it is, we have a well-thought-out, well-designed, extensively studied DAT for what should go there. There's a reason why they chose that piece and not another piece. There are, there are unique aspects of that particular area.
And we think access is one of the main reasons, but Roland, to answer your question on my side, the market's really tightened up, and even since last year, it's tightened up. There're just not sticks we were ever expecting built on the retail side.
Oh, no, I, I know, I, I've made phone calls to different developers in different areas, I, but I understand.
But to get competitive, to get, when this grocer and some of these retailers come in and say, this is what we're gonna pay, with our costs and things that we have on the infrastructure side, we just can't get to that lease rate. So, we would be subsidizing them for a period of time, and we're saying, can't we come together through incentives to work together to make this successful? That's all we're asking, and, and maybe we can't get there, but thank you for your time. I, I know you have a busy agenda tonight, and you've been so gracious to take a few minutes. And Stacy's got such good evening minutes, because she made copies for everybody in her, and we appreciate her doing that, and we'll reconvene, and we'll get some drawings and come back. Are you gonna have any financial projections based on the tiny market, the heads of blows, the planning, and all that other? And, and we had some mistakes in there, to be honest, that we probably shouldn't have had, and there are some things that, on some pedestrian bridges, and some other things that we can revise.
Let me add this, I mean, we've been planning this to be a town center for 25 years. We brought the bank there, I think that everybody here would have to admit that that's a nice architectural, it's a nice-looking job. We was a little disappointed with an eyeglass, but we've had problems with culinary water for some time. We're in the process of drilling a new well right now. We drilled once or four with Hyland, that didn't work out. And so, I think it's been fairly well thought out, I mean, you know, and the bank normally don't come first, they come last. And the bank's been very happy being there, and I think it's been an asset to the community.
And we have seven. It's all my kids' camp, I don't-
Just need to get a Starbucks, that's what everybody would need. And that, and the one at Mountain View, probably isn't two corners, for Starbucks, I said, the box.
Yeah, Starbucks would be a little closer than it costs.
But aren't we all surprised that those two corners in my intersection? Aren't we surprised in that busy 80 night that they could call up that Burger King and that Starbucks there and say, something?
And they're building like crazy now, aren't they?
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, was he motioned?
It's just top dog.
I've gotta go to gym, call. Night calls.
Didn't vibrate at all.
Whatever, whatever. Seven hundred seventy-five thousand.
Hello, Mike.
Hello. Eric.
Hello, Chuck.
He wants to, he's looking for three of them.
Oh, we just need some.
Yeah. Just like Steve.
What's, what's the time?
Yeah, US four, you know, today. And, and so, he's got lots of, he's just trying to perfect out the challenge. He's looking at incentives, he's looking at investment bonds, assessment bonds, age revenue bonds, CP bonds.
Mavericks have fresh lines, you know, that makes a difference. That makes all the difference.
Do you ever get fresh lines, like the actual fresh lines?
Michaela Ricky?
No, fresh lines. You ever hear of fresh lines? Darrell, next time you go to Dibs, tell them you want a fresh line, just for that.
A fresh line?
Yeah, she'll, she'll know this. It's the most delicious drink in the world. It is so good, definitely.
They fresh line.
She makes it herself.
I've tried it.
Yeah. Fresh line, it's just pretty much a line Ricky without a grate, but it's amazing.
Okay. I was going to, I was going to want a grocery store down there, because everybody that works at Canada is gonna stop at Smith's where they can save them.
So, the same thing.
And by Smith's, it's a, um-
This is the-
So, if you could fix that, I, I think you could see this, I think you could have it.
Okay, so, um-
I gave it to you. How are you? We have a sign.
This one we already voted on, didn't we?
No. It's on tonight.
We have the draft. It's still approved, is the floor.
But if I don't stop, I've gotta go clear.
All right.
Thank you.
I think I'd rather call. I'm not really even moving. It's just like you did. I mean, people are just kind of, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I like, I, I buy it.
Yeah, well, there's the problem, because I know the issue.
Um, I thought we got that on there before. Just to point the number of-
Oh, yeah, last call, but we waited to hear it.
You say, you said you were, you said you were, and then, but I don't have any time, so I'm telling you, my apologies.
My original electronic card was getting rid of people. I got somebody else. I knew how long it had been, looking for anyone, but you couldn't afford it. And I thought it would be more tickets. Do you want these? Do you know those about there? Do you want to make them?
Our county was there. We got tickets.
I have a bunch on my desk, I certainly don't need those. That was a fascinating evening, just like I felt like I needed to. But you have a fascinating one.
Was that what's in here?
Oh, good evening.
Sort of be interesting to see their new proposals.
Especially since I-
I didn't get one. The first time.
I directed asking, would you be willing to do any additional commercial or instead of all residential? And he threatened to sue me, and I even asked for it.
They have a very-
So, we'll see if they've got something new to propose this time, because they's never been willing to even go, even consider opening that development.
So, the reason was an engine was that she said one way. She said your name on it.
I think he's enjoyed that.
No.
Probably.
And I'm kind of like, no, you give us support, that is.
Well, that's the thing, I don't think anybody's been against looking at more commercial. I don't think any council meetings have ever been like this.
In my view. Says you have I do. That's also, if we're gonna have a residential-
That's the most annoying thing.
Hmm? Because I want it to be successful. Yeah, the town center, they wasn't flawed as far as that zoning, until we redo that ordinance, because you're right. They've already told Lance that coming back was straight residential.
Yeah, so we're not gonna get a town.
You're not gonna get a town center, you're just gonna get another subdivision.
I think it's crucial.
I think our, it's a pretty good idea. Yep, that they can come to a agreement between them, so that they're willing to open it up and discuss it. There's a habit of the council that's slow to adapt to the commercial.
I don't think we have voted, I do have a number voted for.
Liquidist first.
I would, I would say we have to slow down, to slow down here.
Just to get a, their consent. Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look for that soon.
He's done quite well for himself.
Oh, I'm not saying that. That way, far exceeds me.
Yeah.
You'll get Mike. Not now, I'll step out.
I'll have my dinner.
You for a minute.
Take your time, it's that, I'm sorry. Should've brought it back to you.
The blinds messed up, it's dog's fault.
We're all here.
He was over there trying to rip them down.
Stacy?
Yes.
So, what's this for?
I think it goes, it's to the phone system. I didn't.
All right.
It's, it's the red button to explore.
Okay.
The eject button?
Let's go, let's push it down.
I'm saving that for later. I didn't know you were gonna collect pre-meeting this time.
I'm ready now.
I want to welcome you all to our county council meeting this evening. Uh, if you have phones, if you could put them on silence, if you need to take a phone call, if you'd step out in the hall, we greatly appreciate it. Uh, we'll start with a prayer and a pledge, and that will be given and led by Member Kilmer.
O dear kind heavenly Father, we thank thee for this wonderful opportunity we have to come together as a community and discuss the issues that face us, and so that we can try to preserve and protect our community and, and keep it the place that we love and the place we all came to. Father, we ask that thy Spirit will be with us, that we will discuss things in an open and honest manner, but in a manner at which we can be cordial and, and respectful of each other. Father, we ask these things humbly in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stacy, did I just miss the minutes? Do we not have minutes? Okay, so we need to remove the approval of minutes from our agenda. Uh, any other comments, questions on the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda with minutes removed.
So moved.
Member Cannon? Have a second?
Second.
Member Swan? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Conflicts of interest with any members of the council on any of the agenda items?
Mr. Chair, I would have a conflict of interest with respect to item seven, by virtue of my legal representation of the development entity.
Okay. Any others? Okay. Public comment period, this is when you can come up and voice your opinion, this is not a two-way dialogue, it's just voice your concerns, comments to the council. Open to public comment. All right, seeing none, we're gonna go out and public comment then. Uh, item number one, Chuck.
Evening, councilmembers, thanks for allowing me the opportunity. What I have on the agenda tonight is just a formality, a memo of understanding with the state for points of distribution in the event that we had an incident where the state would be bringing in supplies or commodities for us. It's just a, an annual thing, annual note on here that the, the dates show 2018, and I asked Kimra LeGiles, who is our state DEM liaison, about that, and she goes, no, that stays there, that's the way the document was drafted. And so, I don't want you to think that's a typo, that's what the state asked for in this document. It designates, um, the airport and the fairgrounds as points of distribution in the event we have to have things brought in in an event.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the memorandum of, of understanding between the Utah Department of Public Safety, Division of Emergency Management in Morgan County.
I will motion my member Newton, we have a second?
Second.
I think I remember Valentine. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
We need some help with Mike on this one. We talk, uh, we got a, you wanna go with this?
Want me to go over it?
Yes. Where you're on the.
Okay, we have. We put out an RFP for a medical director. We received one response, that was from our current medical director. This response also is his 30-day notice of termination of the previous contract, because we had a 30-day out clause on the previous contract. So what that means at this point is we either have to renew his agreement or have a different agreement with someone else. This was sent, the date on this is July 17th. So by my reading of it, we have 30 days from that date until August 17th. But I want Jen to look at it as well, I don't know that he's had a chance to look at it and go through it.
You said there's an option for renewing that, renewing our existing contract or going with the new one?
No, there's not an option for renewing the existing.
Okay, I thought that's what you said.
There's a new proposal from him or we have to go with somebody else. But either way, his 30-day notice is included in this.
So we all get a copy of this to review?
So he. Here's a big long list on the back. And it says, I'll pass it over to you, you can read it. Basically says he doesn't want it copied or sent digitally. So.
Can someone do that, Jen?
I haven't seen it, I think we're going to have to review it to vote on it.
That's my thought. Now, I don't know if we want to maybe review that and come back to this agenda item or what we want to do, but.
Well, I can't discuss something I haven't reviewed.
No, I agree.
It's not the Magna Carta, it's not like a sacrosanct thing, we all ought to see it, and it will be a public document anyway.
Agree.
Do it on the 20th, or I would suggest.
Vote on the 20th?
They want to do business with the county that it's open and in the sunshine, and we all get to see it, that'd be my suggestion.
I'd agree.
I don't think there's an option for anything else.
So that being said, his term, well, said 30-day notice, that was as of the 17th. I don't know if we postpone this until the next meeting or what we do, the next meeting is after the 17th, it's the 20th, right?
Yep.
So we'd be without a medical director for three days? Potentially. I guess we could ask him if he would extend through the end of August.
If I remember correctly, I don't think we can run without a medical director.
I believe you're right.
Three-day lapse could be a problem, that'd be three days, you probably couldn't run your ambulance, thank you.
This just doesn't seem right to not be able to review something, to be given a deadline before our next meeting. I don't, I don't like it when a car dealer does it to me.
Okay, well, that's the rock and the hard spot that we are in. Even Chuck said we don't have any other RFPs.
So are you suggesting that we vote on something that we have not seen?
I don't suggest that, I suggest that we review it and then make a decision now whether we review that now and make a decision later in the meeting, or whether we review that, you know, over the next week or two and then.
It's not massively extensive, but I would agree with Robert, I think we make, I don't know, make an effort to see if he will extend this due to the fact that from the time constraints of our meetings, we weren't able to get it till halfway through the notice. Because of his request, wherever that was, I haven't got that far. Or we schedule a special meeting just to review this, we've done that in the past, and I think it's appropriate for certain situations, and if this is, if it needs to be done before the 17th, then I say we schedule a meeting, and this is the only agenda item on the meeting, and we deal with it. If that's not an option.
I suppose we could do both, we could schedule a special meeting and see if he'll extend it past the other meeting, and if he does, we cancel the special.
Cancel the special meeting.
Sounds like a plan to me.
I would like to be able to at least read through it before we discuss it, so.
Is your opinion that we can distribute it electronically regardless of what it says on there?
You're welcome to talk to him, but I would suggest that if he stands strong on that, you probably wouldn't want to do business with someone like that anyway, and you gotta just put a new RFP out and we'll just get an interim. But I just don't.
Well, I'm curious as to what his motive behind that was, that seems an odd thing, and there must have been something behind this.
There's a whole page of legal on the back there.
I haven't seen it, so I can't say for sure, but I would say we don't do business that way, and if someone's not going to extend it for three days, if they're not going to extend the contract three days and put us in that type of deadline, then let's do a new RFP and not be doing business with people who do have it too much.
Can we do like an on-call contract with another county's emergency medical or person?
I'm sure Dr. Grove, who is Weaver Fire District's, he lives in Montgomery, I'm sure he would do an interim if we needed something, if, assuming Dr. Grove won't extend his to that period, I'm sure he would do it.
Maybe we should explore that at least.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Right now. Yeah, I think we should too. Just to be safe.
Okay, so what do you want to do? Give us some direction.
My thought at this point is we schedule a special meeting, if we don't need it, we don't need it, and there's, I think, two scenarios where we don't need that special meeting. Number one, he either extends it until past the next meeting, or we get an interim person. And if we have either of those, then we just cancel the special meeting. Otherwise, we have it and make a decision.
Okay, so when you're saying special meeting, what do you want to discuss in this meeting?
The proposal.
Are we just looking at.
This agenda item.
The contract?
Well, this isn't even a contract, this is just a proposal for RFP, there's not a contract.
Then you have to enter into negotiations on your contract, this is just a proposal.
Yeah.
That's what we put out there, right?
You want to discuss this, that's the only thing we're discussing on that meeting?
That's my, that's my suggestion.
Okay, when do you want to do that?
I want a full agenda. Why don't we do it next Tuesday?
You got next Tuesday and 13th?
I am hard no on next Tuesday, but I'm okay to do it without me, I can give my input beforehand, so if it works for everyone else, do it that day.
How about next Monday?
Monday, Tuesday is the only day that I have something.
You said Monday, Tuesday, or?
No, Tuesday is the only day.
Oh, Tuesday.
I can do Monday or Tuesday.
I can do Monday or Tuesday.
Available to balance.
Okay, do you want to go Monday?
I go Monday.
Huh?
Monday.
Sure, what time?
5:36.
Well, if this is the only thing that's going to be on there, then.
Do it early and get it done.
And I'd say let's go 5:30. And hopefully we'll be done by 6:00, and then Stacy can go home.
Oh. It'll be the same item as number two, discussion, decision, medical director proposals. I'm sorry, I am not available.
Seriously, we planned that around you.
It's okay, it's okay. So are you going to get a, are we able to eat a coffee of it then, or? If Jen thinks it's fine, I'm fine with that, I mean, I don't have an issue with it, that's what he says.
They probably recommend it.
I either give it 13, and you're not going to be dealing with Morgan County, that's what I expect. And he's going to, they're going to give you permission, or you're going to.
I think it's reasonable to distribute it. But it sounds like if.
Wednesday?
And Wednesday I fly out of town, so I'm available Tuesday night, so.
I fly to you Tuesday night, that doesn't bother me.
But Sarah's actually, EMS is part of your assignment, so I think it's probably better for you to be here than for me to be here, so.
Good point.
Okay.
So we're sticking with Monday at 5:30?
Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we postpone item number two until special meeting next Monday, the 12th at 5:30 PM.
Okay, and most of my member in, have a second?
Second.
Member Swan? Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It sounds like if we are going to do another RFP, though, we need to encourage some emergency room medical doctors to at least make a proposal. Because, I mean, the only one I know in the county is leaving on a mission in September, so it's not going to work for him, otherwise I would. Is that Dr. Grove? What's that? Is that Dr. Grove? No. It's Craig Marsden. There are a number of medical professionals in the county, I don't know all of them. A lot of medical professionals, but don't they need to be emergency medicine qualified? They should be, should be.
Okay, number three. Hangar lease. Are you doing that, Joe?
Wake up.
Hangar lease for Jeff Franklin?
Yes.
Yes, that's the first one, Jeff Franklin. Yeah. DD5, 5540.
Is that 50 by 50 or 50 by 40?
40.
40.
50 by 40, okay.
Have both of these been approved by the airport board, I assume? I'm going to make a motion.
Member Newton?
We'll do them separate, just for the sake of doing them separate.
Well, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the hangar lease for Mr. Jeff Franklin on hangar pad DD5.
Okay, motion of Member Newton, have a second?
Second.
Valentine? Questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve.
This is number four.
Lease for hangar pad number eight, to Mr. Bernie Fulencamp. I'll second.
Okay, motion of Member Newton. Saying goodbye, Member McConnell. Questions on motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
You're good to go? What?
Cat one mark.
Oh, Member McConnell.
Yeah, George Sousa is here to make the presentation, I just went ahead and scheduled the agenda item.
Okay.
So, I'm George Sousa, I'm the current chair of the Airport Advisory Board, and I'm an aircraft owner, I'm a pilot, and I have a hangar at the airport, just a little bit of background, I can give you more at any time if you'd like. We have two.
He didn't name both DD5 and AD.
Near-term problems at the airport that we think are solvable, and they'll be good for the airport and good for the county. The first one is, we've just run out of 60 by 60 hangar pads. Thirteen of them are gone, they're not all constructed with hangars, two of them are pending construct, actually just one of them is pending construction. No more large hangars left, they were the most favorable hangars from a cost-effective point of view and from storing more airplanes as well. So that's, that's our phase one problem in our plan to address these issues. The other big issue is the Forest Service, they have a pending request for a hangar with the Ogden Airport. And so they're, they're considering moving to the Ogden Airport, we want to keep them here, we want the benefits of having them here, it's good for the county, it's good for them as well, I think they would prefer to be here. But because of this pending lease request that they have, we don't yet want to move forward with our phase two. So, so you have four pages of handouts there.
The only thing that happens won't be sent last week.
They don't have all of it, it, so.
Was that the one that you emailed?
Yeah, I reemailed it because what I sent wasn't all included, but if you, if you look at the second email, the email from me as opposed to what was in the agenda, they have all four pages.
Okay, so shall I just walk you through everything here, that may be the best thing to have to do here? You can't hear me? Okay, so. The phase one changes, and those are more imminent, because we've just run out of hangars. They'll convert those smaller hangar pads, especially the 50 by 40s, there's 10 left, they'll convert those into, what did I say, I think it's 10, 60 by 60s, but it would be adding an additional row of three. So, so you have a diagram there, not so much a diagram, but an actual.
Or the rhomella stack.
Plan, we have this page here.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, gotcha. That was in the packet.
So that shows the, what we would do with the, with the pads, so previously those were all 50 by 40s. One of them will stay as a 50 by 40, and you can see that's the DD, it's shown as DD4 on here, originally it was DD5. And the other four that were 60 by 40s, which you don't really see, those will be 60 by 60s. On the backside, there would have been six 50 by 40s, now we would like to change those to four 60 by 60s, and then add an additional row of three 60 by 60s.
What's the difference in, in the lease cost for a, say, 50 by 40 versus a 60 by 60?
So a 60 by 60 is $540 a year, and the, the smaller ones would be a fraction of that based on how that fraction compares to 300. Yeah, so 300.
Okay.
So that's a 50 by 50, or 50 by 40?
50 by 40.
Is 300?
About 300.
By 60 would be five forty. In addition to that, there's, there's taxes too, so we have to come to the county, it also includes the tax.
And obviously taxes would be higher on a larger hangar.
Yes, yes. On a 60 by 60, the taxes I paid this year were running around $2,000, so most 60 by 60s would be very comparable to that. Let's see, the lease history and the, and the sublease cost effectiveness clearly favored the 60 by 60 size, we proposed 10 more 60 by 60s to replace the 10 50 by 40s. That still leaves three 50 by 50s on, you don't see it here, but there are three 50 by 50s remaining that actually face more.
On CC?
Yes, on the CC row. In between the DD and the EE row, there is only half infrastructure, that includes gas and electric, but it does not include water or sewer. So that's another reason why those are not desirable hangars, because it doesn't have, they don't have full infrastructure. That new FF row has none whatsoever, but we believe that that's close enough to where we would put the Forest Service should we decide to go ahead with phase two. And that would essentially share the infrastructure between the Forest Service and that FF row of hangars.
Is that their desired location, the phase two?
It's the only place left, so where they are now, they're across the Willard Creek Road, there's homes that have complained. And they're, they have shown their animosity with hand gestures, and so that has prompted the Forest Service to, to look at Ogden Airport for another opportunity. We have since tried to mend that animosity and bring it back to the airport and sign them for a long-term lease. The only other place to put them is this area, this five-acre phase two area that we see on there. And that's further away from the homes, as you can, you can see it, it should not lead to the voice complaints. A helicopter, obviously with the rotor blades spinning creates a thumping noise, and it pounds on the windows on the homes across the street. So this would be part two, please.
So we would need to get infrastructure up there.
They need the infrastructure up there as well. So we're only into the planning stage right now, we've spoken with Wausatch Civil, we've broken this out into a phase one for the hangars, a phase two for the Forest Service. Phase two is immediately requested, we have another guy that's interested in a 60 by 60, but there's none left, and he would build very quickly, certainly. And I think more would follow, although I don't know of any others right now, but there is at least one interested in another 60 by 60, and we don't have any left. But there is at least one interested in another sixty by sixty, and we don't have any left. So Wasatch Civil has, we have worked with them, Joe and I have, to come up with a proposal to present to you a maximum of twenty-five hundred dollars per phase. So if we just go with the phase one, it's up to $2,500 in planning fees to get this rolling. And of course, that's just the planning and grading as well. But it does not include any actual physical infrastructure modifications. So that would be necessary to go down the road.
So do these sixty by sixties, do they meet your requirements for the airport?
Yes, oh, yes.
Because the last hangar you got going-
It was much bigger, and that's, it did not meet the-
It didn't meet any of your standards, that's why I'm asking.
Right, so we are not proposing anything different than the current sixty by sixties that are there right now.
And so the three FF ones, if the Forest Service relocated, you would put it there? Or are you talking about above it?
They would be just above it.
They would be just above it.
Yeah, where you see those kind of tanks, tankers and trailers.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
And the Forest Service, their requirements, I don't think you have their requirements. They want two buildings with seven, approximately 7,000 square feet. They want parking, 15,360 square feet, and four helipads, one of which can be anywhere on the airport. Wasatch Civil believes that they can put that into that five-acre space. So we think it can be done. We just need to hear from the Forest Service that they don't have this encumbered with the Ogden Airport on the request to lease a hangar there. And so without that, I can't recommend that we move forward on that. But we do want to move forward on phase one with your approval to get Wasatch Civil planning how we would do this and how we would modify the infrastructure and grading aspect of it as well.
Okay, so that's one of my questions, the infrastructure. Where's that money coming from?
That's, my understanding is that it comes from the county initially, but it is recouped when the hangars are leased out. Each individual hangar owner pays a certain portion of the infrastructure costs.
Like an impact fee when it's sold, is that how we've done it?
That's how it is right now. Each time one of these leases goes, they repay that portion of the infrastructure.
So would we put that infrastructure in now as part of this phase one plan? Or is this simply the planning phase?
This is strictly the planning. So the $2,500 for the planning, and then we'd get that done, and then we'd come back to you and say, okay, here's where we've booked it. We're contractors, maybe we can get some people put on who to look at for that. And then we present another presentation.
Hopefully, at that point in time, you may have more than one individual that wants a sixty by sixty, and it makes more sense to start laying out infrastructure.
Yes. You know, and this individual may build before the infrastructure is in place. He is that eager to build, and so that's an option too.
So have we approached the sewer board as far as the sewer infrastructure?
I have not. No, we have not done that.
How about the water company?
I talked to them once several months ago, and they seemed to think it would be, it would not be a problem. I have not spoken with them recently with, you know, here's what our plan looks like, and you still think you can handle this. So I can do that. I just have not done it.
So I think this is just a proposal to authorize Wasatch Civil to do the design work in order to change the plan. Once we have the plan, then I think the airport authority would need to contact Sewer District. Cottonwood Mutual Water Company would be the water service provider here, as I understand it, in order to figure out if we can move forward with the plan and so forth. But this kind of, at least gets something drawn so that we can have something to present for them to respond to.
Already approving phase one and phase two. And I think it's important for the county to keep the Forest Service up here. I think they've been good customers, so.
If you like, that is not our recommendation to you, but certainly if you would like to do it that way, you can.
We could make a motion to approve the second phase in the event that the Forest Service says they want to relocate in Mountain Green, so you don't have to come back.
Is that your motion?
If the chair is ready for a motion, I'm happy to do that.
Also, Mike, go ahead, Member Cannon.
I would also like to encourage Wasatch Civil to work with the water company up front because he has expressed serious concerns over we keep doing planning without including him into the process of what is actually possible. And then we go to him, and he's feeling a little frustrated.
So, okay, so the $2,500 or the five grand, depending on what we end up doing, that's coming from where?
What do we have in the airport?
That will be defined in the motion.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out what the motion is.
I don't know if we have one yet.
You would have to do it out of a-
His first question is, which bucket am I taking it out of?
You'd almost have to do it out of a fund balance.
We don't have it in the airport, do we?
Well, the airport does, is a revenue source, but it is not necessarily an expense line unless you can give me one. Okay, so we could do 10-4-5-5-0-3-4-0 improvements. We'll have to do a budget adjustment.
Those are all airports?
That is the airport improvements line. Or we could do 10-4-5-5-0-7-3-0, which is improvements other than buildings, where we budgeted $250 for the year. So this should be fun.
$250? But this is $2,500.
What was the intention of that line item, do we know? Improvements other than buildings? Oh, okay. Gotcha, that makes sense.
We had a built, since we own the building there, we wanted to have the building and then anything other than building.
So, I guess-
So it will require a budget adjustment?
No matter which line item we put in.
Yeah, because it does not.
Okay, Member McConnell.
I'll move to approve the airport advisory board's request to approve the proposal from Wasatch Civil to prepare a master plan and grading plan for hangar expansion at a cost not to exceed $2,500. And secondly, to approve master plan and grading plan for expansion of U.S. Forest Service facilities at a cost not to exceed $2,500 contingent upon the Forest Service indicating their desire to move forward with their facility at the Morgan County Airport to be funded out of 10-4-5-5-0-3-4-0-0-0-0. And- It is improvements. And to make the necessary budget adjustments in order to fund from that line item.
Okay, have a motion by Member McConnell. Do you have a second?
Second.
Member Cannon. Questions on the motion? Yes, I do. So for clarification, we're just having Wasatch Civil draw up a proposal for this.
For phase one.
For phase one.
Do the plan for phase one.
We have their proposal. They're doing the actual plan for it.
Okay, for phase one. And then if the Forest Service comes back, we're going to do Forest Service, correct?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure we understand, I'm understanding what you're doing. Okay, have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this point, I gotta be a knee. This point, what? I gotta be a knee. I have more questions. But that's okay.
Lost me.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Lance, Woody Earstates.
Sorry about that. So I'm Lance Evans, planning director. Woody Earstates, this is a proposed plat amendment. It's amended lot 20. Phase three was platted with the anticipation that a little space. This is a location in Peterson, Woody Earstates. This is lot 20 that's circled in this picture. It was platted with the anticipation that there would be, phase four would come in and actually be further to the south and east of this. They would like to amend and add this property into their existing lot 20. The new owners, they worked that out and made arrangements with the developer of Woody Earstates Phase Four. And so that's just, they're going to amend lot 20. It requires a plat amendment when you're doing between phases. The infrastructure's already in, so the existing lot ends at this red line. They're just adding this area over here so that they have a little bit larger lot.
What is that area currently platted as?
It's not platted yet. In the concept, plot for Woody Earstates Four, that would be a lot that comes down. With this 0.4 acres coming out of that proposed lot, future lot, it still means zoning requirements, and it'll still be fine. Plenty of extra space. They changed a lot of their phase four plans. They got from, oh, I can't remember, 30 lots down to 12 or something. So they, with their modifications that they've done over time, over the last couple of years from their original plan, the lots are fine, and there's plenty of extra windows to meet the zoning requirements and subdivision requirements. So this just helped this property owner and didn't hurt the future plan, so.
Anybody have any major issues with this? Seeing done, I would make a recommendation, a motion?
Okay.
If you're okay with that? To, for the council to approve the plat amendment for Woody Earstates Phase Three subdivision subject to all applicable regulations and the following conditions listed in our packet from the Planning Commission, one through four.
Motion by Member Kilmer, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Member Newton. Questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Lance, number seven, phase five.
So this is Cottonwood, the Mountain Green. The Cottonwoods is phase five. It's this, what appears to be a small area in the sanity map. It's a silver leaf drive that comes up and wraps around this particular parcel. It was preliminary platted a couple months ago for 68 units. The applicant has come in for a final plat on, for a phase one with 11, and then phase two with 24 units. So what we're looking at here is phase one, which is, this is lot two with these units. And lot three really is these three units over here, and then these eight units. Because it's condominium platted, that's where the setbacks and the boundaries are taken from as per the preliminary plat. It has met most of the requirements for, for this is phase one that's being requested. And then phase two is this area that actually will have Harvard Street come up, and Oxford Loop will be put in to this configuration. The applicant would like to get started, and they're just coming in with these two phases at this point to get started a little bit before this next year, so they can hopefully get on home in 2024 winter and then work on sales. Most of the conditions of approval for the preliminary plat have been addressed or will be addressed in more detail with the construction drawings. So we have that language and those requirements that will need to be met and will be met with the construction drawings when they're submitted. So it's really pretty straightforward that we're moving on as to the planning.
Chair.
Member Kilmer.
Lance, I went through this, and I, there's a, what, nine items here from our attorney? Sorry, our engineer, sorry. There's nothing from our attorney that I noticed. I'm concerned about approving something with that many issues on there. I went through to see if something had been, if there was a document newer than this date that addressed any of these. I didn't see any of that. Is there something in there that indicates that many of these July 22nd items have been addressed?
I think on the plat, most of them are either construction-specific documents, utilities and the exact placements of fire hydrants, that type of thing.
There's, yeah, there's those, there's the 100-year storm event for the pipe sizing. And be honest, I read this on my iPad. Most of those plans, you, I can't read anything that's on there. I can't even read the engineer stamp on there, so.
Well, I, my understanding is that most of those will be either, they are addressed on the plat and have some language there to flatten out that we have to address. We've talked to CCNRs, will need to be confirmed and some language added to those before we're allowed to report it. But with these conditions, we really need the requirements and have all those by the draft. They've got to either bond for all those improvements, and that will really be outlined, or actually put the improvements in before it's reported.
Yeah. I guess between that one and the fire department, those are a lot of conditions on there that I could worry about doing an approval on that without that being in front of us.
That is the first item on the findings and conditions of the planning team to address those or make sure those are all addressed from the engineer's memo.
Daphne is here, if you'd like to ask any questions.
So here's another question for you. On number four, it says numerous road cuts in Harvard Drive will be required for utility connections. The plan should call out the patching. We feel that the patching is extensive enough to require that the roadway be restored with an overlay and chip seal. Is that something that's binding, that the applicant will have to do that? Or is that something that's negotiated?
Well, if you approve it with that as a condition-
As a condition?
And the condition is mean engineering, that engineering letter counts as a condition of approval.
Okay.
So they're accepting that, not accepting the reason. That does bring up Harvard, Harvard Drive.
Harvard Drive, yeah.
There is a little area that was stubbed to the north initially. It's a little road stub that's about, right, it was like plus 102, 104, somewhere in there, 103, 104. That needs to be vacated somehow. That got through the process without getting caught. So that application is in, that's one of the conditions of approval. That application is in, it's giving public notice so that that application requests. But it's just a little portion of that off between Harvard Drive with a little technicality that requires some sort of publicity here and helping you guys for a little while on that vacation. So like, that's one of the items, they'd have to do that before they can get it reported.
I've got another question for you, but I wanted to ask it before the meeting because it's kind of ticky tacky, and I really didn't want to bring it up in here. So I'll think about whether I'm going to ask it. Because I really think it's something we can discuss after and be just fine.
Okay, well, now, the question I got on number eight. There's a reference on phase eight in the storm drain calculation that appears out of place. How are we, how are we addressing, addressing it? I mean, just it's out of place, are we addressing it or are we not doing anything with it?
Actually, no worries.
Number eight in the engineer memo.
So.
I mean, it just says it's out of place. Are we addressing it or are we just not worrying about it?
Well, no, we would, we would address, we would make sure that it's addressed.
Skyler, do you want to address the issues in the engineer's memo?
Okay, Chair.
Yeah.
Just to address a few of the questions. Well, let's go to that reference to phase eight first. Phase eight infrastructure will carry in the future potentially a phase eight storm drain system. So an area was identified for phase eight to carry.
Is phase eight up on top?
Yes.
Okay.
It's up on top where the water tanks are, owned by Mr. Ted Taylor. So the report for phase five makes reference to future potential storm drainage coming through phase five. And to go to Member Kilmer's question, on the review comments by the civil engineer, we've already met with our engineer and he's contacted Wasatch Civil to understand in more detail their questions. And they are already working on revisions for most all of the items. So like the pipe carrying capacity, by increasing the slope on the pipe, they carry more water at a faster rate to address the 100-year, the 10-year storm event and the 100-year event.
So those are being addressed?
They are, yes. Yeah, and we've already been in communication with them and we may even have some review, or updated drawings back within just a few days probably. Same with the fire chief. We went through preliminary approval, we wanted a couple of extra hydrants. In his final approval, he added another four hydrants, so we've gone back and we've added in those four additional hydrants. There's a few things that have popped up between the preliminary and the final review and we will address all of them. And we can make those conditions of approval. We plan to work with fire chief, Wasatch Civil. We actually haven't received any reporter comments back yet, but we will work with Brenda on any comments she has, as well as the water company in the sewer district will also have review comments. I think everybody will always have a comment until the lawyer prints it.
I've got a question for you, because I'm curious how you're dealing with this one. And that's on number two from the fire department and that's regarding placing the storage limitations on the plans. Wouldn't that be required in an ordinance specific to subdivision, blah, blah, blah? Your reference, or your response, I'm assuming it was you that responded, said, "The storage materials will be listed as prohibited in the covenants and the HOA will have the ability to enforce this by including the right to remove and/or fine people who violate." In my opinion, the only way to have something that would be enforceable by the county sheriff would be, would require Morgan County to create a new ordinance specific to this subdivision. It would probably be better handled by code enforcement officer. How, after the two of you have gone back and forth, what's your intentions with that?
We will be including a note on the plat that makes reference to note the storage prohibition of any type of materials, including the garbage cans between the units, to be enforced by the HOA. My comment back to him was, he wanted the sheriff to be listed as the enforcing authority and I think that was kind of outside of my realm and I didn't think it was appropriate.
Well, I think you answered correctly. I think your answer to him was correct. I was curious, because yeah, that's not an option.
Force a lot that's not on our books.
So what, what were you going to do?
So, yeah, we're putting a note on the plat. We've expanded a little bit, listed garbage cans or any other, any of the storage materials at all between the units will be prohibited, enforced by the homeowners associated.
And that includes garbage cans?
Yes. So that will be on the plat and the covenant. There was also his comment about the OSB boards on the first four feet of the homes where there's only temporary separation. I didn't think that that should be, should go on a plat, that'd seem more like a zoning plaques, you know, detailed zoning thing. But after discussing it with Lance, we're actually just going to include that note on there as well and make reference back to the covenants to satisfy the fire chief's concern that all of the things that we've shown him for fire safety are actually going to be followed through on, we're going to throw on flat town covenants.
So how are you addressing the issue with the tight corners for the fire department being able to get through with parking on the street?
Yeah, so, and I haven't been able to even in specifically, but so in the first two, so the first phases here and the second phases here, we're actually planning to probably include some off-street parking in this location here and maybe one or two stalls in this location. And then outside of that, we'll either be painting the curb red or posting no parking sign, no street parking signs. So that these radiuses here, I think they're 125-foot radius, that these radiuses remain open and free for his large apparatus to make those turns.
So your street parking would just be banned on the radiuses though, not the rest of the?
Not on the straightaway, yeah. It is a 55-foot right of way, so there is 36, 32 feet of asphalt, it is a three-length traffic.
If you're putting parking stalls in there, how's that, keep that open? You said you're talking about putting parking stalls in those corners. How's that going to keep that radius open?
He's gonna, because you're gonna have them on the street because they won't park on the street.
They wouldn't park on the street.
So if they want to park on the corner, they have to park in the parking stall, is that yours?
So, yeah, they either have to park, you know, this direction of this driveway here, that direction, well, actually, we probably would just prohibit parking around this entire curb, I guess both curbs right there, would make more sense. In, in these two phases and we'll, and we'll address this curb, this curb isn't as severe, but probably this curb in the future as well. So he was worried that the roadway, if cars were parked on both sides, that he would not be able to get in between the two cars. And just to measure, it, it is a 55-foot right of way and there is 36 feet of asphalt, so even if cars are parked on both sides, he still can't get, he still has 22 feet of width in between the two of them. But, you know, alleviated his concerns, we have agreed that we would restrict parking around those curves on one side of the street, on the inside curb area.
Does it show that on the plat? I've been saying, if it's not on the plat that we approved, then it don't exist.
We're, we're not approving that section of the, we're only approving phase one tonight.
Well, both plats.
One and two?
Yes.
Okay.
So we haven't traditionally listed road signs, no steedlinen signs, no parking signs. Those have gone on the site plan. So to answer your question, is it on the plat? No, it's not on the plat, but we can include it in drawings to address the fire chief's concerns.
Sure. The condition number two is that the fire protection plan will be met. And this will be an element of the fire protection plan that we have to address. So we've got a plat note, so that we can enforce it, it'll be in the CCNR, so the homeowners can enforce it, and then the details are getting finalized on these first two phases.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay. Motion on number five.
I do have, I do have one more question. And this is for future. I'm assuming the same concern is going to be on that bottom right-hand tight corner there? Yeah.
Yes.
So I would just recommend, when you bring that one in, that you address that one before. Because we'll have the same concerns there.
Yeah, there, there was one more round of back and forth on the email that I sent to Brian, his last name. Yes, thank you. Where he was, he was reviewing it on his phone on vacation, but he felt in good and that we could finalize the details when we got that.
Okay.
Skyler, what's the plan for snow removal and placement of snow? I mean, most, most cities or towns will have an ordinance that says you can't park on the street during winter months because of snow removal. What's the plan here?
Well, the streets are public. We're proposing public streets, the Harvard Lane, the Oxford Loop here. The driveways will be privately maintained by the homeowners. The majority of the home designs we have, three of the four home designs actually have three carton roaches.
Okay, so there is adequate off-street parking or, or should be?
There should be and the driveways and the, the home itself is set back 20 feet, so there actually is sufficient room for parking two cars in the driveway and three cars in three of the four home plans, so. But beyond that, we haven't, we haven't detailed any further restrictions on on-street parking. There are some in the master covenants that don't allow it for more than 48 hours, I believe 72 hours, but we haven't included any additional details.
It sounds like, though, our, our public works folks could make a decision that during winter months, we don't allow on-street parking.
I believe that takes a county ordinance and again, that puts us in that position of doing an ordinance for one subdivision, that's tough to do.
Well, we're not supposed to park on the street anywhere.
During winter months.
Do I already have the ordinance as well?
Well, the public works department complains about it all the time.
Well, yeah, there's not an ordinance there that I'm aware of.
Yeah, there is. I thought there was.
There's a no-street parking in the county.
During one of the winter months.
I've never heard of it, never seen it. I know the city has one and they enforce it quite heavily, but.
I think the county ought to, just for the snow cloud or.
And the public works is still not very happy that we approved this shrinkage of the planter and sidewalk and all that, because they know that the homeowners, now that they have smaller sidewalks, I mean, they're going to throw it all back out on the street anyway, so.
We did keep the large park here as per preliminary approval on this one, so.
Oh, you did on this one? Okay, good.
That was one of our conditions of preliminary approval to stay exactly the way it was approved in 2005.
Okay. Well, that'll make him happy. That was all my questions, thanks.
Okay, so clarification, so we're approving phase five A1 and two, correction?
For now, until he renames them to make Mark happy.
That is the renamed.
Oh, that is the renamed version?
Okay.
Middle Park West 5A condominium, phase one is the first 11 lots. And Middle Park West 5A, phase two is the other one, is your?
Phase five A, phase one.
Just one phase.
Okay.
Middle Park West 5A.
Phase one.
Oh, so you've changed. I'm with you now. I see it up there at the top.
Okay, there are no more questions, motion?
I make a motion to approve the Cottonwoods at Mountain Green, phase 5A1 and phase 5A2, Middle Park West subdivision, final plat, application number 19.031, located approximately 6,500 Silver Leaf Drive in the Mountain Green area, based on the findings and conditions listed in the staff report dated August 6, 2019.
Second.
Okay, motion by member Swan, second by Mr. Cannon. We're good with the Wasatch Civil, with the engineer?
As long as they're all met.
Well, that's, that's part of the staff report, item number one.
I'm just making sure we're clear on what we're putting in there. Okay. Okay, any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I am opposed.
So am I, but I know it doesn't be good because it's a development agreement.
So are you for or against? I voted against it to start with, so.
So did I.
So are you for or against?
I'll go ahead and go nay.
Okay. All right, motion passes. Number eight, Lance.
So I think this one. So, first of the, I gotta back up through all the history and figure out where we want to start. With the Wasatch Peaks Ranch, we brought on a planning, additional planning help to help us through that process. The person we hired designed recently, several weeks ago now. And we've gone forward and done the reviews and, but we wanted to get in and we discussed bringing forward someone to come in and be an extra set of eyes on this large project and this development. Since that time, we've had, we've completed the staff report for the Planning Commission. We've had, the Planning Commission has discussed it at three separate meetings, having quite a bit of detail. We are coming together on where we're at on that development, but we still ask for that. We put out, we've kind of re-requested our proposals with those planning consultants along with an additional party to, to get, to see if they would have any availability or interest in, in providing that help to us the next several weeks while we work on and wrap this project up. We received one proposal from, I think it's given planning services, something like that. And so that's for you to discuss tonight. Questions? Want more detail on anything?
I want your opinion, Lance. What do you want to do?
Given that the Planning Commission has worked on it and discussed it for three, the three meetings, I think we've met with the applicant a few times to try and get those together. I'm comfortable, it's a little bit of a stretch, but I believe staff can, can wrap that up. Some of the other, we have a few other big projects on our, on our work program that we do, that we have in place. We've got, we've got several projects moving forward and we've kind of got the ball rolling. I think we can wrap this Wasatch Peaks, staff can do this on, about bringing in the outside consultant at this point. I think it's changed a little bit since we did the RFP. We were being cautious in doing the RFP, making sure we're doing everything to the Planning Commission and the publics have that chance to weigh in and we're quite a bit further down the road, so I think we feel okay that we can bring everything the Planning Commission, the public said, get it back to you guys and finish the deliberations and the public hearings on the Wasatch Peaks Resort Special District. That, along with the staff workload, I think we'd be okay to not hire a planning consultant.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Well, straight up, I'd rather have another set of eyes looking at it, no offense intended to our plan department. I mean, wherever we go, I, I would just like to continue and have another person looking at it, but that's my opinion.
Are you saying, just in terms of reviewing, so if, let's say that Lance and his team puts together the final staff report, you just want someone else to read through the material? As opposed to having them prepare the staff report and/or a separate study or something like that?
No, I'm act, I'm actually looking at having, I would rather have someone else look at, at this and do the staff report and do the rest of the presentation. I mean, it's, it's a huge project. They, I'm not saying they can't handle it. I'm just saying sometimes it's better to have another set of eyes looking at, at what you're trying to finish, especially something at this, this scale.
So if somebody else prepared it, your intention would be for Lance to review it, right?
Well, they would, to me, they're supposed to be working hand in hand with Lance anyway, so he would know what they're preparing because they've got to get information from Lance anyway.
Well, yeah.
I think one concern I have with bringing in a separate consultant, on the basis of having them prepare it, they have to come up to speed with all of the things that Lance and his team have already done. If what we were saying is we wanted someone to, to review the final report. If what we were saying is we wanted someone to review the final report, to look at the material and make sure that they, in consideration of our ordinance, that from my perspective takes far less time in terms of what they're doing and what we're paying for than having them be the initial authors of the staff report and so forth.
Okay. I kind of agree. I think it's tough to bring anybody in at this stage cold and have them up to speed enough to where they can write the actual report and defend it and that, in any kind of a reasonable amount of time. Not that they couldn't do it over time, just like anybody else could, but to start that process all the way over again, that's, I think we're asking a lot of our applicants there. I want it done right. I agree entirely. I want it done right. I want it reviewed right. Maybe that puts a lot more onus on us as council members before we approve it, that we read it in great detail and really red-line it and make sure we're content with what's there, but I think it's hard to bring somebody up to speed at this point.
Since our sole applicant is a resident of the county anyway, with some expertise in this, is there any indication that she has been following this process and is possibly as informed as?
I don't know for sure. I think in conversations...
Correct me if I'm wrong, though. When we talked about this before, we had addressed the other applicants that submitted RFPs originally. And then you had mentioned about accepting the one, the RFP out and accepting any more. And that's where we got this other one. So it's not just the Kippen Planning one, it's the others three that we had on the original docket that we're looking at.
Except none of those three submitted any additional material or indicated time or interest in moving forward. So really, the only one who's indicated, correct me if I'm wrong, the only one who's indicated they're willing to help and assist the county is Kippen's consultants.
So Kippen's the only one that responded to your new RFP? The other three did not?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's one of the reasons why Lance is saying he would rather proceed as is.
Okay, well, make a motion. Let's go. Let's move on here.
I'll make a motion that the application move forward utilizing the county staff to prepare the final staff report for council review, and that we don't retain an additional consultant.
Okay, motion by member McConnell. Second?
Second.
Member Valentine. Questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
You have a nay?
I'm a nay. I would like to have another set of eyes on it. It's a big project.
Okay, motion passes. We'll continue on. It's yours, Lance. Weber Human Services, appointment of Clint Thurgood to the Weber Human Service Board.
I just now emailed you a copy of the resolution Weaver County passed, in case you need to see that. I believe they just need you to okay that, since you've just paid them.
Chair, make a motion that we approve Clint Thurgood to the Weber Human Service Board. Second.
Motion by member Valentine. Second by member McConnell. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, perfect. Member Swan.
This is just to approve the agreement between us and Julie Miller. It establishes that she is working as an independent contractor. Her monthly rate is $900, except for the months of September, wait, October, November, and December, excuse me, in which case she's paid $1,000 per month for the extra work that the holidays bring there. You all should have received a copy, so it's basically...
So for some reason, page one of the agreement didn't make it into our packet with two and three?
Well, they got the last one.
There's something going on with the copier.
But she has a hard copy here. Anyone wants to see it?
It's been approved by Jan.
Now, we're good, Jan? On your side?
We are, yes.
Any other key points other than the amount?
And we've talked with Julie.
She's already signed it instead. It's an executed copy.
You good?
I'm good.
Maybe we better readdress the EMS doctor if it's this easy. Let's just get it done.
You'd like to bring that back up for discussion? I can update the council on if someone...
Should we finish this one and then bring that back up? Did you get a chance to read?
I was kidding. You don't have to bring it back up. I'm just joking.
I'm going to make a motion on this agenda item unless you want to take time to read the first page of it. Are you guys okay with it as is?
I think it went down.
Okay. I move that we approve the contract between Morgan County and Julie Miller for the position of Director of the Morgan County Food Factory.
I'll second.
Motion by member Newton, second by member McConnell. Questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First of all, Sarah, did you still want an executive session?
Well, Chuck had to leave for his fires, and he was going to be part of that with us, so maybe we hold off until...
What's your thoughts? Before that?
He asked me if he was supposed to be here for that.
I guess we could still speak briefly.
Yeah, we probably ought to speak briefly. Before we go into that, though, member Cannon has an update on the EMS medical director position.
Oh, he said he had a structured fire.
He got called out to a structured fire.
Lovely.
Okay, so, I want a motion to readdress EMS.
Okay.
Oh, you're going to make the motion?
I'll make a motion that we go back to agenda item...
Two.
Two, and readdress.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion to go back to item number two. Second by member Newton, or motion by member Cannon, second by member Newton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Without discussing anything in the contract further, Peter Talek is the state EMS director, and his opinion is it is totally okay to go without a medical director for a period of time, as long as there is a good faith effort on the part of the county to find someone. It has happened in multiple locations during his tenure, and there will be no penalty from the state. We do have an ER, a medical director who is willing, is uncomfortable with any of the drama associated with it, that if we have a need, he would be willing. So, if we want to reconsider the contract, we will have coverage if we need it, and...
Sounds like we don't, so we're fine to...
Sounds like if we're three days without, we're not shut down.
Right.
So we had this on the agenda for the 20th still?
For the 12th.
We were going to do a special meeting.
I would say we cancel that meeting and wait until the...
Sounds like you're going to be leaving.
We can do it on the 20th.
Looks like you can circulate this now and look at those proposals, and I would probably talk to your EMS director as well, give some opinion with the others.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that we cancel the special meeting on the 12th and have this agenda item number two on our August 20th meeting.
So, Jan, is it your legal opinion that we are good to photocopy this and to pass it out so that everyone has a copy?
After looking at it, on the last page, it says that it's okay to share it with the county council and myself, and then there's some boilerplate language that says you can't copy it, but right above that, it says you can share it, and so I can't imagine we have to share that copy. So my opinion is you're fine to share it. We're named specifically that we're allowed to review it, so I think we ought to have a copy electronic or otherwise to review it. I think you're fine.
Not being an ER doctor or a medical director, typically on an RFP like this, we would have a team that would review that with that expertise, so that we know what we're looking at.
Are you asking me if you should form a committee to look at this? I think it would be wise if everyone took a look at it and we took our time, because there's some options there, and there's different costs to the county, which hasn't been budgeted for, and I think it would be wise to...
Would that include medical professionals who do this professionally, so that we know what is typical in a contract?
Potentially, yes.
I've never seen an RFP that didn't have a committee review it, that didn't have at least one subject matter expert, and I've seen a lot of RFPs, so...
I would agree with that.
Do you have a recommendation for...
Sarah had sent over, we do have, the Weber County Medical Director, I'm sure there are several other medical directors along the Wasatch front that we could pull in more than one.
Okay, so just saying, we've got a motion by member Newton to withdraw. To withdraw his motion on 12th of, meaning for the 12th of August. If there's no questions, we need to vote on that motion and get it off the table.
I'll second the motion if it wasn't seconded.
Second by member Kilmer. All those in favor of that motion?
It's been a long time.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So on the medical director, you're, we're going the 20th of August? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, and I would recommend that we form an RFP review committee with members, with medical professionals, who with the expertise to review the proposal.
Who's going to form that committee?
There are three of us on the EMS portfolio. I would imagine between the three of us and Chuck, who is the director for the department, we can pull in resources.
So is that your motion to have the three council members that that's in their portfolio assignment work with Chuck Candi to form the committee? Would it be the committee?
I love that proposal. Magically, that seemed to come right out of my mouth that way.
If that's your motion, I'll second it.
Thank you. That was my motion.
Motion by member Cannon, second by member McConnell.
Does that give you enough time to get an expert on board to review that as well?
I sure hope so.
To review what? What do we review?
The RFP.
The RFP.
We have a proposal, but it's not even an agreement, right? So is that what they...
This is just a proposal, right? Then we still have to contract an agreement.
Okay. So does the committee just review the proposal and then we review the, as a council, the agreement? Is that...
They would typically review the proposal, make a recommendation, and then that would go to the council, and at that point, you would do the agreement.
You're talking about your review in this proposal?
There's multiple proposals, and your committee can take a look and see if that's even close to what the industry standard is for proposal. That might be a good thing for us to get before we even get to a contract.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion by member Cannon, second by member McConnell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Who said no? Mr. Kilmer and Mr. Haslam.
Okay, so do you still want your executive session?
Yes, please. And before that, just for the record, I wanted to mention that the Megan Wilkinson and the Fair Board did a fantastic job the last week and plus with the Fair, and we appreciate all the work that they did. Just want to say that publicly on the record.
Ditto.
I agree.
Yep, yep.
Should we make that as motion?
Okay, need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by member Newton, second by member McConnell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll be in closed session.